We're good. You're good. All good.
Oh, I'll second. If somebody seconded, I'll second.
Yeah, Luke did.
I was like, I wasn't sure if somebody had.
Got you.
All right, it takes us to the proclamation commemorating Juneteenth.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, and those at home, our mayor has just had major oral surgery within the past week. This is the first of three surgeries he's going to have. So please bear with him tonight. We will all help you get through this meeting with minimal speaking so that you don't further injure yourself with this meeting. So.
I'm doing okay. Thank you. I appreciate the.
So, did you want to read it, or did you?
You go ahead and read. I'm not going that far. But I think I can get my point.
Okay. City of Hazel Park proclamation commemorating Juneteenth. Whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the abolition of slavery in America, having originated following the emancipation of Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865. And whereas, on that date, the Union Army arrived in Galveston and brought news of the Emancipation Proclamation to enslaved African-Americans living there who celebrated through feasting, prayer, song, and dance. And whereas, the following year saw the first official Juneteenth celebrations take place in Texas, and the tradition soon spread throughout the United States to become the annual social and educational event that it is today. And whereas, enshrined as a federal holiday in 2021, Juneteenth continues to provide an opportunity to promote and cultivate knowledge and appreciation of African-American history and culture. And whereas, in the wake of the recent racially-based mass shooting in Buffalo, New York, it's important to reaffirm a national commitment to justice and equality. And whereas, it was in the spirit of these ideals, the City of Hazel Park adopted a human rights ordinance in 2021 that recognized the inherent dignity and equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family, and sought to prevent discrimination based on physical, mental, demographic, and/or ideological differences. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of Hazel Park does hereby commemorate June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth, and calls on individuals and organizations to condemn all forms of prejudice and celebrate our treasured ideals of liberty and equality. Furthermore, the City of Hazel Park is pleased to co-host this year's Juneteenth event with the City of Ferndale on June 18th at Greenacres Park.
Thank you, sir.
You are very welcome.
The proclamation is made. I'd like to open up civic announcements. Anyone have any civic announcements for the community? Seeing none, we'll close civic announcements. Move to public discussion. I have a lot of papers here for public discussion. A lot of people want to talk tonight. Eric McPherson. Welcome.
Eric McPherson. I reside at 23639 Popular Court, Hazel Park. Lifelong resident. My family's been here. My grandpa. Our whole family lives in this city. I'd like to address the responsible contracting that's coming up today, and I hope you put a low threshold on it. For years, I've been talking to the city councils year after year to try to adopt something. In the City of Hazel Park, the building trades have a member that lives on probably every street in Hazel Park. Electrician, a plumber, a pipe fitter, sheet model worker, carpenter, cement finisher. One of them were involved in this area. And our programs, our apprenticeship schools, if you guys adopt this, the students can go to our trade school with no college debt. They won't owe a penny. A lot of places advertise, go to these trade schools, and they end up having to pay $10,000, and they never get a job out of it. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, and ladies. But we offer you to come take a tour of any of our facilities. We got over 10 unions within a five-mile radius of Hazel Park. And I'm here, I'm a member of the sheet model workers' local lady, and we volunteered in the trades with the park, and I know the mayor and all the council were involved with that. But I encourage you to adopt this responsible contracting. Royal Oak done it. Oakland County done it. Ann Arbor done it. Warren's about to adopt it. Southfield's looking at it, and numerous other communities. And we can have opportunity for our kids to have free education. And we do promote diversity, inclusion, and equality in our programs. We don't discriminate at all. So I hope you guys will adopt this, act on it quick. It'd be great for the City of Hazel Park.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Eric.
That would take us to David Hartsack.
How you doing? My name's David Hartsack. I'm actually here on behalf of my members' local lady, but of the skilled trades in general. I'm here to also ask you to adopt the responsible contracting legislation in the City of Hazel Park. Like Eric had mentioned, lots of other cities and municipalities have already adopted this. It's good legislation for keeping the work in your area and investing in your residents. You know, we would hope that you would have legislation there that would require contractors on city-funded projects to be local contractors, make sure they're not out-of-town contractors or out-of-state contractors, keeping the tax dollar money, you know, back into our community or your community here. As Eric said, we train, or it creates opportunities for the kids or the children in your communities because out of high school, college isn't for everybody. The skilled trades offer an alternative to that, a paid alternative where they get a five-year education. They're making great money when they get out, and they have no student loans to pay back. Also, typically, and it would depend on how you word that legislation, but union contractors in general have a higher bonding and a better safety record, and they have a better record of getting jobs done on time and on budget. And all that is stuff that will potentially save the money, the city tax dollars in the long run. A low bid, to start with, that doesn't necessarily mean that that project's going to be, you know, the lowest ones by the time they add extras and overruns and stuff. So anyways, like I said, I'm here to ask you to adopt the responsible contracting legislation here in the City of Hazel Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert George.
Good evening, council. Apologies for my voice loss over the weekend, but hello. My name is Robert George, and I'm the Director of Advocacy for the Michigan Labor's District Council. I come before the City Council tonight as a representative of Labor's Local 1076, which covers all of Oakland County and based in Pontiac, to speak in favor of item one under the administrative report of tonight's agenda, the Responsible Contracting Ordinance. Before going further, I wanted to clearly state what responsible contracting is. Responsible contracting is a policy that seeks to improve the overall quality of construction contractors bidding on municipal work so as to provide the best value to the municipality and your community. I wanted to initially speak on the benefits that the RCP would provide, from increased pay and benefits to workers on city projects, to a higher share of city residents working on these projects, to improve contractor fitness and quality in the construction. The proposed Responsible Contractor Ordinance would do a tremendous amount of good for the City of Hazel Park. Hazel Park were to adopt this ordinance, it would join a growing number of municipalities across Michigan, raising the bar for construction contractors. As some of the other speakers have already noted, in the last year, cities as diverse as Jackson, Ann Arbor, Monroe, Bay City, Royal Oaks, Celine, and recently Canton Township have all adopted versions of this ordinance. Additionally, neighboring counties such as Wayne, Oakland, Washtenaw, and Saginaw have also all adopted similar policies. It is time for Hazel Park to raise the bar on how the city does construction contracting. A prime concern that is regularly raised on this policy is increased time burden on city staff to review enhanced bid materials. Important to note on this is that it is not incumbent on city staff to independently verify every individual statement or claim made by every bidder on every bid. Rather, these criteria should be viewed as a means by which city staff and city council can compare bids on a level playing field. Perspective bidders are required to affirm that all information submitted to the city is accurate, and if it is discovered that a contractor lied on its bid sheet, the proposed policy provides a legal recourse for the city. As implementation can be boiled down to a straightforward form, I urge the council to lower the threshold amount that this policy would cover from $250,000 to $50,000. The public deserves confidence that all contractors of substantial size are facing the same rigorous vetting process. Other cities in the region have adopted threshold amounts as low as $25,000. For the fiscal year 2122, the base amount for section 1267, for pertaining to construction, renovation, repair, remodeling, and for sections 23A and 1274 of the Michigan School Code, where a vetting process such as responsible contracting can be implemented, the threshold amount is $26,046. Finally, I urge the city to adopt assigned percentages to each of the categories in the bid evaluation section of this policy. Doing so would ensure that contractors have a firm understanding of what they are being evaluated on, how they are being scored, and that key equity items are being given appropriate weight in the bid selection process. This transparency in bid evaluation is a common process in other municipalities that have adopted this ordinance and would likely prevent a repeat of the lawsuit that the city faced several years ago facing the surrounding dispersments of marijuana licenses. Transparent bid score sheets that are accessible to the public are a gold standard for municipal contracting. In summary, there are many benefits for Hazel Park if it were to enact a responsible contracting ordinance. Of all these benefits, none may be more sizable than the improved trust that the community would have in how the city does construction and contracting. I want to commend council members Sullivan and McFall for introducing this ordinance. I hope this body acts expeditiously in enacting a responsible contracting ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Lemick.
I should have gotten up at the civic announcements, but I was a little slow. This is Chris Lemick. I am a resident of Hazel Park on Hazelwood. I've come with a couple of announcements. The Hazel Park Madison Heights Chamber of Commerce is now having an office in our Baldwin House on Woodward Heights Boulevard. The apartment is 132. We've loaned that out to them right now because the city center in Madison Heights is redoing their whole area, so they didn't have anywhere to go. So they're using one of our apartments. Also, I wanted to let you know that there's an article about the Neighborhood Enrichment in the CNG newspaper, and there'll be another one coming up soon. But just take a look at that and see what the Neighborhood Enrichment Group is doing. I went around today doing the Neighborhood Beautification Award that's in my area, and a lot of people are concerned about how we do that. And one of my houses was a nomination. It went to Facebook, then it sent to me, and I send it out to whoever's doing it. We divide Hazel Park up into four different areas. I picked, I went to the nomination. It was beautiful, took care of, put the sign, did my thing. And then I just drove around in my area and found the second one that I have, because I only get two signs. We have four people, two signs. We have a lot of city to cover. And if anybody would love to help us, we'd like their help. We meet at the Baldwin House on the first Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM, and we decide different things to do and see what everybody's doing and see what we can help the city for. Also, Sandy, at the last meeting, came up with an idea for the city, and we wanted to present it to you tonight so you can think about it. So I'll let Sandy talk about it.
Good evening.
Evening, Sandy.
I'm with Neighborhood Enrichment still, and I live on Jarvis in Hazel Park. And my idea was, for the holidays, a new event. I noticed that some of the other cities nearby have a Holiday Lights Parade where people decorate their own personal cars, and they do a parade through, in and out through the neighborhoods. And then we thought that would be a fun event for Hazel Park. We would need the cooperation, of course, because we'd need help from the police and maybe, you know, the DPW wants to throw in a dump truck decorated up and stuff, so forth. But we're willing to plan this event out with whoever, you know, whoever you suggest we get together with, if you're interested.
That's a cool idea.
It's a cool idea. Maybe we get together with the recreation department and have them put together some kind of plan together with the other department heads and come up with some kind of.
Okay.
That might partner well with the Santa Parade.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking.
Try something with that, and then we can kind of have a little festival.
Yeah, because Roseville is already doing their planning for the holidays, so.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. We'll get with the rec department. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we got all these school board candidates. Start with Adam Debershire.
Dubenstein.
Debershire.
And Mr. Mayor, after the school board candidate speak and we finish public discussion, I'm told that the officers are here for the swearing-in ceremony.
Cool. We'll have you right up.
Good evening. My name's Adam Dubenstein. I live at 132 West Garfield in Hazel Park, and I am running for school board. I'm really excited to be running. And many of you I've, I know already, which is wonderful. Just to let you know a little bit about me, I'm a clinical psychologist. That's what I do for a living. I don't just play one on TV. I actually do the job mostly. And I'm really excited to bring mental health awareness back to the schools, talking about not just how to support the students, because that is very, very important, but also supporting our teachers and our staff. Really looking forward to talking about expanding foreign language offerings so that students can get really good jobs anywhere and hopefully bring some of those jobs back to Hazel Park. So I just wanted to say hello, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to Monica Ratie.
All right. First off, my name is Monica Ratie, and I live at 22670 Maple Court. Some of you know me, some of you do not. I have been a lifelong resident of Hazel Park. I grew up over on East Garfield, went to St. Ray Magland, and then graduated from Bishop Foley. I work currently at Remax in the Park as the Associate Broker and Bookkeeper for the past 10 years. And then I've worked now for nine years for the Hazel Park Promise Zone. That is literally my pride and joy of what I do. I love working with the students. I love bridging their gap from high school to college. We've got a lot of new programs. We have College Success Coaches and mentoring, and I actually have three children. Two are in district, one's at Webb, and one's at the junior high. So for me, I feel like my main goal is to make our school board a team and come together even with the city. I know you guys have backed our Promise Zone tremendously, and we appreciate that. So I would love to bring the city council a little closer to the school board and have them be there for our students. Like Adam said, too, I would love to have foreign language bring, even in the younger years, because when you start younger, you learn better. So with that in mind, I'm also PTA president over at Webb, and then I do PTA at the junior high. So I'm a little bit everywhere. I am the mom who just wants to keep doing best for her children, so I want the best for everyone's children. So hopefully, I get elected with Adam and Ben, and we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings up Benjamin Irvin.
Raise this up a little bit. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you just fine.
Fantastic. Thank you. My name is Benjamin Irvin. My address is 2180 Brickley Street. I'm a Ferndale resident, but as well, I'm also a resident within the Hazel Park School District. I'm running for the Hazel Park School Board. So I am introducing myself here tonight to you all. I'm a strong proponent of education in public schools. My lived experience has taught me the value of an education, both personally as well as professionally. I believe that every student has the capability and should have the ability through their education to reach their highest potential. I'm seeking a seat on the Hazel Park School Board to be a voice and a vote for decisions consequential to student achievement. The great boards lead great schools, and Hazel Park students, families, teachers, they deserve more than just one new warm body in a cold seat leading the district. They deserve a united board filled with advocates fighting for their future, for the community, for the students. And there's many people on the school board currently, but you have three people here that are presenting themselves tonight that want to make that united front and that have a shared vision. Excuse me. That being said, we believe that they deserve an advocate like psychologist Dr. Adam Dubenstein, who just introduced himself, who has a strong understanding of the, you know, trials and tribulations that, you know, students face. An advocate like Monica Ratie, who's been working tirelessly on the Hazel Park Promise Zone in order to support bridging, you know, college monies for students. They deserve more. And that being said, you know, my name is Benjamin Irvin. I'm a member of the Hazel Park Community Coalition. My background is in business. In business, we learn to add, you know, one plus one to equal four, right? You're adding that value add, and you're focusing on the return on investment. I want us to focus on that return on investment, you know, getting an investment in the time and the energy where students can get the biggest ROI. One of the things that I am really interested in promoting is focusing heavily on the core skills, you know, reading, math at the early ages, focusing on getting all students to graduate at a higher rate. If you look at the graduation rates today, we are so close to being able to bridge going from about 80 up to 95% in a graduation rate. It's only 23 students. There's so much that we can do. I'm a big proponent of supporting financial education and making sure students leave school knowing how to make their way to financial freedom. I think that education should start early and often, and we should make sure that we're not just doing the minimum of the state, but that we're going farther than that. I think many of you know that there's House Bill 5190 currently on Gretchen Weller's table. Additionally, I want to see Hazel Park's commitment to career technical education deepen and branch out to students, help them find internships, as well as I would really like to see a career fair start up in Hazel Park schools. I think there's a lot of jobs here in the area, but I think there's also, when we talk about the welding program that's recently kicked off at Hazel Park, it's been taking off like wildfire. Why are we not reaching out to companies such as Lincoln Electric and bringing them here and showcasing our students? There's so much that we can do to promote Hazel Park, the teachers, the students, the community. And there's so much more that we can do. So really, the time is now, and I hope we gain your support and really, more importantly, your vote. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public discussion? We will close public discussion and back to the swearing-in of the K-9 units and Rocky and Apollo. Are they here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. We have Chief Buchholz and several members of tonight's shift here, and we are joined by Animal Control Officer, I mean, pardon me, K-9 Officer Michael Kazdorff, and two of our officers, Rocky and Apollo.
Well, welcome.
If he alerts, I know who he's alerting to.
Well, you could pick two of us.
He already passed my bag.
He doesn't do that.
Come on, business.
Gorgeous. Oh, my God.
I'm always working.
Read the swearing-in to the mic there, Jim.
Can he raise his right hand, or is that?
Can you raise your right paw?
He can sit.
All right. So, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Hazel Park Police K-9 Unit in and for the City of Hazel Park, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
You gotta speak. Nope, you gotta say, you do. All right. This might be my favorite meeting, so.
And for the record, that is Jimmy Frinkley, our city clerk doing a swearing-in.
That was Rocky. He's going to get Apollo now.
That was Rocky. Apollo's our newer K-9. up.
Who named the dogs, do we?
I think Officer Kazdorff did.
I was just curious.
Yes, Officer Kazdorff did. Rocky, he had Rocky first and went through the training process, and then the city bought Apollo. And coincidentally, there's been tons of donations for all this stuff.
Nice.
As far as vest and a bunch of other stuff, he's gotten through donations.
And of course, there's a Tahoe out there was purchased via a contest that Hazel Park won thanks to the support of our residents who clicked a lot of likes onto the website there to vote for us, and we were able to secure that Tahoe. Fortunately, it was bought for Lando, and he's no longer with us, but we do have two great dogs now. Here comes Apollo.
Here's Apollo.
Oh, my God. He's so cute.
He's unbelievable.
He's the explosive protection.
Yeah, we can see. He's ready to go.
So, Apollo, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of K-9 Unit for the City of Hazel Park in the County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I'd like to take a moment to thank all our fine officers for showing up this evening.
Yes, absolutely.
And thank Officer Kazdorff for bringing Rocky and Apollo in. We're swearing in, and a great addition to our police department. And that will take us back to the consent agenda. One through 10 is presented.
Mr. Mayor, I have one deletion for item eight. At the request of one of our council members, I would like to remove item 8B from the consent agenda because there was some property maintenance issues raised over there that we would like to clarify before we bring this one back to you.
Move minus 8B.
Move approval of the consent.
Move approval of the consent agenda, items one through 10, with the exception of item 8B.
Support. Thank you. Any dissension or discussion? Consent agenda is passed. Takes us to the topic of controversy, I guess. Ordinance to add HPMC 15 dash point five five responsible contracting first reading. Mr. Globisher.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the administration presents and recommends approval of the responsible contracting ordinance for the City of Hazel Park.
Any particular reason why you got us $250,000?
That's what Royal Oak has it at, and that's what we feel comfortable with the staff that we have, that we can deal with with projects of that size, scope and magnitude.
I do have some concern about.
Councilperson Solomon, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I do have concerns about it being raised at that level. I did a substantial amount of work on this ordinance and bringing it to our city. I've spoken with many other people in other cities where this has been adopted. Royal Oak has a significantly larger financial budget, but they also have significantly larger construction projects on moving forward than we do here in Hazel Park. At $250,000, I feel like this would be more of a performative ordinance and wouldn't really actually do the things that I'm hoping this will do for our community, which is bring more equity and more transparency to the bid approval and more value to our community in the bid approval. I'm not comfortable at the $250,000. I've had some other discussions individually with people in this room, and I would definitely prefer that this be reduced. The original amount that I had submitted it for was $50,000. If we are going to keep it at a higher level, I would be interested in seeing some information about how many contracts we've assigned and we've passed and what their dollar amount was, because I don't want this to be only effective to 10% or less of the contracts that we're approving.
Okay. We can try to get you what data that we can get you with respect to contracts. I don't know how far back we can go and how much data we can generate. I will tell you that it has been the policy of the City of Hazel Park to use union contractors whenever possible. We did our court expansion before you were on council, and it was my mandate and mandate of the city council as well, that we used 100% union labor. And again, what we, from the administration's perspective, is we only have so much staff. So, we're supportive of a responsible contracting ordinance, but it needs to be something that we can manage. Initially, the entire administrative staff was hesitant to recommend it as first it was presented to us. We feel at this threshold, we're comfortable, we'd probably be comfortable with some reduction. Perhaps there's room to reach a compromise and that we feel that we could, police live with and manage at a little bit lower than $250,000, lower the threshold a little bit. I want to be cooperative, and we certainly support the goals and concepts of this, but I can't tie my staff's hands and bind us to something that we simply don't have the staff or ability to really investigate or police.
I understand that. And the other person that brought this to the table would be Councilman McCall. Do you have any comments?
Yes. So, I think that this ordinance, I mean, we should be promoting skilled trades, and that's one of the things that, like the school board members were just discussing about promoting skilled trades. Not everybody's going to college, you know? And so I think that this is very important for our community as a whole. Again, you know, the training that they offer, you know, I think that's all good. I do think that $250,000 is really high, so I don't know where we can move on a compromise exactly, but I would definitely like to see it much lower as well.
Just compromise to go to $125,000 and see how it works out, and if we revisit it in a year, if it doesn't, or two, and there's an issue with it, and we lower it again, or leave it where it's at. What do you think?
I do want to point out that this is not a union-exclusive ordinance.
Goes across the board.
This is about getting more value versus just low price, and this helps to better evaluate as a city council who maybe isn't ultimately familiar with the business practices of a specific bidder or contractor that's bidding. So I just really want to make that clear. This is, while this is absolutely in the vein of equity and transparency and absolutely does support union workers, this doesn't exclude non-union contracts, so I just really want to be very clear about that.
No, it's just that, it's just that union contracts tend to bring all of that stuff, you know?
For the record, the administration's obviously not opposed to this ordinance. We just want to make sure that it's something that we realistically can.
Can be managed.
Can manage it. And that's just, that's where we're at.
With our staff. And, you know, we don't want to put something in place that we can't handle with the staff we have.
I mean, I.
I think a fair compromise would be something in the middle.
Why don't we then go with 150? Okay? And that.
I like 125 better.
It's right in the middle. I think we can judge it from there and tweak it if we have to down the road, but also, this whole ordinance also, from what you can, if you read it, gives a fairness across the board so that everybody has a fair shot at correct bidding. And that's really what the premise is here for a lot of the unions. They can't get fair bidding because they have better skilled labor, and they're paying their skilled labor better, and they want to offer a better package across the board. And I understand that, and I respect that. Thank you.
And the administration has no objection.
And I know that, but.
Completely support the goal.
But the problem is these other contractors that are bidding, the ones that may not be the union contractors or a subsidiary of a union contractor, may not come with all their qualifications up to par to meet the qualifications which we want to find here, to find a better asset to do the work for the community. So that's where I would stand, and I don't want to go all the way down to 50 because I want to see where this plays out at 125. And I'd like to see it revisit it in two years. Give it two years to play out. If it needs to be visited before that, then we'll take the change out, if we have a better way of managing our staffing at that point.
Okay. The administration, you know, will still be supportive at 125.
All right.
I appreciate that.
Can we have a motion to adopt that that change?
Awesome. I would like to make a motion to adopt on first reading the HPMC Chapter 1555 responsible contracting with the lowered projected value of $125,000 under Section 1555040, application.
Support.
Get a roll call, ma'am.
Any more discussion first? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Solomon?
Yes.
Councilmember McCall?
Yes.
Councilmember Licero?
Yes.
Councilmember Londo?
Hell, yes.
Mary Webb?
Yes. This will make it fair across the board, I think, for everybody. Thank you.
Just wanted to get my approval on the record.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you guys all very much. Thank you so much for your help.
Ordinance number, item two. HPMC CH 15.56 offenses affecting government functions, first reading. Mr. Globisher.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will defer explanation of this one to City Attorney Melissa Schwartz. She drafted it, but the intent of this thing is to ensure that we are receiving accurate information when someone fills out a piece of application or paper. Again, you want to talk about responsible contracting, but if there's no penalty for fibbing, then it's not worth the paper that it's printed on, so.
Go ahead.
It's not only pertaining to the responsible contracting, but when you fill out information for permits and other information, just try to, thank you. So it's not just about the responsible contracting, it's also about other types of forms filled and submitted to the city. For example, the Building and Code Department received lots of forms and applications, and the information just has to have some kind of assurance that people understand that there's consequence if you're going to try to commit fraud and mislead the government and its employees, especially when there's issuance of things that affect the public health, safety and welfare in our community. So this is a very important part of having accountability for the individuals to understand that this is not just something that we're going to talk about, this is something that we're going to actually enforce.
I love it.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is it, so, actually, I have two questions. One, I mean, have we had a problem with this? Is it that we know of, or is this, okay?
I think that Lacy's best to answer that, and I'm sure she would shake her head yes with these things.
I was just curious, like how big of a problem it was.
We've had inaccurate information placed before, so, again, if you're going to fib, then we're going to issue you a ticket.
Yeah.
And there's a difference between, there's a difference between an inaccurate statement, which is an honest mistake, and just an outright.
Outright lie.
Full of crap lie.
Yeah.
And that's what we're looking for on these types of things.
My other question is, can we add wording, if we pass this, to those applications so that they know if they put something on there or a sign at the building department or something, just so people, maybe as a deterrent before they fill it out?
Excellent question to put notice down on these forms. And yes, that's something that the departments are coming together to address. I know Lacy's been talking with us, and Jimmy has been, has been, we've all been, all of us. Everyone that works for the city really does rely on this information, and if you put some BS, for better words, on there, and you are misleading the individuals who are actually relying on it to make the decisions, and it doesn't matter who is processing that application or form, they should be able to rely on that information.
All right, thank you.
And if this helps us get more, I'm sorry, Andy, go ahead.
Well, I recall in 2009, we had an applicant for a, like, a grocery store, an indoor gardening grocery store. He had a felony. He said he didn't have a felony. He lied and didn't get his permit, didn't get the business. If he'd have told the truth that he had it, he would have probably got the, it wouldn't have stopped him from getting it. Lying stops you from getting it. So, I support this, but.
Absolutely. And again, as I said before, we don't have a big staff, so everything that we do, anything that reduces our ability and deters inaccuracies on this paperwork is easier for our small staff to manage, because we really can't investigate everything like we'd like to, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Have a motion?
I was going to say, I just want to thank our city attorney and city administration for bringing this forward, because I think it's really valuable to our city and your effectiveness. And I would love to entertain a motion to approve ordinance HPMC Chapter 1556 offenses affecting government functions on the first reading.
Support.
Any more discussion? Dissension? Motion passes. Force Commissions, Christopher Adams wants to be on the police committee.
We don't have a police committee. We will contact him and.
Maybe put him in somewhere else here.
I was going to ask about that, because I saw it. Okay, all right.
Yeah, we all kind of had questions about that one. Anyways, and that takes us to new business, item one, resolution for some house keeping cleanup paperwork here, to change of the word.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our resolution on the poverty standards and exemptions was duplicative according to the State of Michigan, and there were several things in there that were already covered by the asset and income evaluation, and they did not feel they needed to be listed individually.
Okay.
So we request that you approve the resolution as presented.
I have a motion.
With the corrected spellings.
Move approval of the resolution establishing policies and guidelines for granting.
With all the correct spelling.
Poverty exemption from payment of property taxes with poverty. Poverty.
Now, remember, I called her to fix this, to do this resolution at 4:38.
He's done a great job. Only one typo.
Because we want to get it in. If we didn't get it done this month, then our board of review wouldn't be able to hear any poverty exemptions. So it has to be properly noticed.
I have a support.
I'll support.
Do I have any more discussion? Okay. Dissension done? Motion passes.
I have an item in new business, Your Honor.
Okay, what item would you like to talk about?
Not a motion, but just wanted to publicly state that I did commission the city administration to look into changes and modifications to the Memorial Day Fair next year to prevent a repeat incident with the recommendations that I provided, Ed, and as well as the recommendations that he has, and certainly the recommendations of our public safety, and to present those to the council as well as keep those in mind for next year's fair and a timeline indeterminate so long as it's completed appropriately ahead of the planning for next fair.
Yep. And again, I've been going to these carnivals since they were enhanced. I think I've been to almost every one since 1988. So this year, we had something, and some I policed as a reserve officer. Initially, it was exclusively a reserve detail, and now it is regulars, reserves, and pretty much, you know, whoever we can get to work it. We had a lot of police presence, but we had something that we hadn't seen before with a couple groups of people showed up simply for the express purpose of fighting and starting trouble. So the police department made the decision to shut it down a little bit early. I don't think we can ever guarantee that there'll never be some kind of a skirmish between juveniles. Having policed the event myself and having been there over the past however many years that is, like 30-something years, you know, this was something different. This wasn't a minor skirmish after between a couple of kids who are a couple of small groups. This appeared to be a planned event, and, you know, they were wearing not COVID masks, but complete masks, and it was a very different kind of a situation. So our police officers and recreation staff did a very good job, and they made the decision to shut it down early. So we were making literally observations about how to change things in real time throughout the entire weekend. So it happened literally 45 minutes after I left the park. So I had to go to the Mackinac Conference the next day, so I had to, you know, pack luggage and do laundry and stuff like that, like normal humans who aren't city manager do. And I got the call from shutdown an hour early because of the problems and situations. So we have some suggestions already. I'm sure you all will have suggestions, and we're going to make sure that we control access a little better, and we'll have some new rules in place next year that will hopefully make it a little bit more safe, and we'll do the best that we can, because we always do the best that we can to protect the residents of Hazel Park.
Hopefully, we have a lot less hateful people in the world that have agenda problems and probably more concerns about humanity rather than their own personal issues.
That is the.
Ultimate goal.
$65 billion question is how do you solve this level of hate, anger, and readiness to move to violence over anything? So in the meantime, we'll do the best that we can to implement an effective security plan. We did have a fantastic.
Had a great event.
Event. And, you know, it was only at the last minute there of that night and a little bit the night before where there were problems and issues. So we had record attendance. The vast majority of young people and certainly adults behaved very well. I think we had some of the fewest problems in the beer tent that we've ever had there. And, you know, all in all, it was a great event, except for some folks that came at the end just to make trouble. And we weren't unique. Unfortunately, it's been a pattern with carnivals across the metro Detroit area. So they're going from one to the other to the other. So we'll have a few tighter rules next year.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
But all in all, I want to thank Serene Papakian and Amanda and Mike Monroe and the rest of the team over there. They did a great job. It was an amazing event, so. And also, we had some floats in the parade, so, and some of the people who did floats in the parade are actually in the audience, so I want to thank them. Back in 2019, the last time we had a parade, I think we only had one float. We had multiple floats this time, so that was great to see and appreciate the community. So that was great to see, and appreciate the community coming out, and I think this generated some interest, so hopefully next year, we'll have an even bigger parade.
Yep.
So anyways, thanks.
Communications from any department heads that's sitting out here? Bring anything up new? Jim Finckley, you got anything?
I don't think I do.
I didn't want to forget about you. City Attorney?
Yes, actually, I do. Thank you.
Thank you.
This past Saturday was the Second Annual Walk-A-Thon for Bruce.org. It was held at the Hazel Park High School Athletic Track, and it was a wonderful success. And our city should be very, very proud for the way that it pulled together. And if I were to sit here and try to thank everyone individually who contributed to make it a great success, we would probably miss dinner and dessert. So I do want to really say thank you to our mayor, our city council, our city manager, all of the administration, department heads, whether it was someone with a letter A for their role, or letter Z, and everywhere in between. It was a pull-together project that was just phenomenal, family-friendly, and I wanted to just say thank you to Dr. Amy Croupy, her administration staff, even the students and the board. And Fox 2 News actually covered our event, which was really wonderful, and Comcast had someone there too, his name is Brian. So the district court, just, the police were phenomenal, thank you, Chief, and the fire department, so thank you, Chief Story. But truly, I feel so humbled, so grateful for this support, because together, we can make a difference to get the information out there so that we can save some lives. So we're going to look forward to our Third Annual Walk-A-Thon. It will be in June of next year, and hopefully, we'll even make it bigger and better. So thank you again, Ed, and everyone, thank you, everyone, for the support. And the community, thank you for showing up, it was awesome.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes. First of all, I want to remind everybody that Michigan's system of municipal finance remains fundamentally broken. I was up in Mackinac, I saw Eric McPherson up there with the rest of the trades up there, and I want to thank them for their hospitality, and I'm pleased that we're able to deliver a responsible contracting ordinance that I think everybody is mostly satisfied with.
Sure.
So, and, you know, pleased that we could do that. I also want to recognize in the audience, I see Melissa Baldwin and Dawn Rice here from the school board, they came visiting with Adam, and Ben, and Monica, and I want to thank and recognize Melissa Baldwin and Dawn Rice for how well they work with the city of Hazel Park. We really have a great working relationship with the Hazel Park School District now, and I want to continue to build on that. And both of those two board members have been extremely important in building that good relationship. We share resources, we work together, there's communication between my office and Dr. Croupy's office now, certainly on a weekly, sometimes on a daily basis. And I think that that's making a big difference for this community, because we can pool our resources, and it's a much more effective utilization of public resources when people are working together and sharing and cooperating than it is when there's a lack of communication. So I want to thank both Dawn and Melissa for all their support. I've already mentioned the great job that Hazel Park Police, the MCSU, and the Recreation Department did during the Memorial Day festivities. By and large, it actually was a huge success overall, and everybody worked very hard, and I'm very pleased. I want to thank the firemen who did the splash thing with the City Edge Church, it was an all-department participation event to make the thing go and go well, and I appreciate everybody's support. Had a chance to attend, like I said, Mackinac, I spoke to every legislator that I could find, and reiterated the importance of taking a look at municipal finance reform, because there are a lot of cities on the bubble, and right now, the way the federal funds were distributed, it was very inequitably distributed, and some cities like Hazel Park got a great deal less than other communities per capita, like the city of Royal Oak that got three times per capita the amount of revenue that the city of Hazel Park did from the federal government. So that's a significant amount of money that they have to pay their personnel that we do not, and we're trying to do the very best that we can, so I will need an executive session to speak with you about contract negotiations and pending litigation. Contract negotiation, personnel, and pending litigation. So with that, thank you all, thank you all for coming.
Councilman Aldo?
Oh, wow. Always managed to keep us on our toes, Mayor. This was my first time participating in a Memorial Day Parade as an elected official, as I was out west last year, and I just want to say, it was really, really special for me, it was special for my family, and it's just really, really powerful to see the community show up. I know the last two years have been a bit insane, so to see the public respond in such a meaningful way was just really fantastic. Chief Buchholz, I just want to commend you and your staff, I know Chief Story isn't here, so please pass along my thanks to him as well, but the way that your staff conducted themselves during the apprehension of two subjects recently was absolutely fantastic, and to do so without shots being fired and without incident, very, very proud of you, and very proud to have such a fantastic police force, so I just wanted to say thank you. Eric McPherson, I'm just glad you're here. Son of a, you know, proud IBW for a very long time, and this responsible contracting ordinance is awesome. I'm just really, really excited to have been able to vote in favor of it, and I know when we talk about the marriage of quality and cost, we're talking about union labor, so to be able to have something like this codified into law that, you know, opens up the door to everybody, but will probably, you know, benefit the 10 unions within a five-mile radius is something really, really fantastic. Monica, Ben, and Adam, I think it is a fantastic rite of passage that candidates for office address city council, it's fun being on this side of it. And I notice that Melissa Baldwin and Dawn are seated by you guys, and I assume that that's not an accident, and those are two individuals that I admire, respect, and trust, and the fact that they're sitting with you guys today speaks volumes. And finally, Happy Pride Month to the LGBTQ community, and I just wanted to say that Senator Jeremy Moss introduced a ordinance today in front of the Michigan Senate to declare Happy Pride Month, something that passed last year overwhelmingly unanimously, in fact. And this year, the state senate majority leader wanted to amend the ordinance to remove a reference to the government's inadequate response to the AIDS crisis in the 80s, removed a reference for protecting the LGBTQ rights, and added that each person is created in God's image. I think it's despicable that politicians are playing politics with the LGBTQ community during Pride Month of all month, and I'm just really, really proud to be a member of a community that did pass a human rights ordinance. So while I know that they're unable, and inept, and incapable of passing a resolution, but it's still legal in the state of Michigan to discriminate against the LGBTQ community in housing, and public accommodations, and employment, so please call your legislator and ask them to amend the Elian Larson Civil Rights Act to be inclusive of the LGBTQ community. Thank you all for coming out.
But it is not legal to do so in Hazel Park.
Damn right.
If I may horn in, because I forgot something, as I do five or six times, I'm very proud of my martial arts instructor, Jay Spiro, she was picked to be the grand marshal for Motor City Pride, so with your indulgence, I will have her here at a future meeting and present a resolution. She's awesome, and that's a big honor for her to be named grand marshal of the Motor City Pride Parade. So congratulations, Jay Spiro.
Thank you. Councilor President Sullivan?
Awesome. Thank you all for coming. I wanted to give a quick update on, we have a Juneteenth event happening this year, it's our first-ever Juneteenth here in the city of Hazel Park, it is a partnership with the city of Ferndale. It is happening this Saturday, June 18th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. It's a free, family fun event. If you love freedom, you should love Juneteenth, because that literally was the time when, it's a celebration of when everybody was considered free. It's happening at Green Acres Park, so it's easily accessible, decent amount of parking there, or you can walk over. Also, a reminder, Hazel Park Art Fair is coming, also to Green Acres Park, that's August 27th and 28th. The applications are still open for artists and musicians, those applications do close June 1st, and you can find more information about that at HPART.org, that's H-P-A-R-T at dot org. I also want to thank the school board candidates and members for coming tonight, I think it's really important. I'm always seeking ways to partner. Melissa and Dawn both know and have my ear often, and I call them often, so I appreciate their partnership, and I look forward to new partnerships, hopefully going forward with our school board members. I also want to thank the Neighborhood Enrichment for coming today, thank you for trying to bring some new initiatives to the community, I think it's really exciting, I love the idea of expanding the Santa Parade, I think it's super cute and fun. I also really want to thank our union members for coming out today and supporting my, speaking in support of the responsible contracting ordinance, I've been working on it for quite a few months, and I'm really excited that we got to bring it before city council and have such good discussions on it. I really do hope that it benefits our community as a whole, and I thank you all for your partnership in working in all the many, many conversations I had with everybody via text and phone call, explaining why it was so important to me. And also, I wanted to wish all the fathers out there, all the mothers, grandfathers, Happy Father's Day coming up, and also, my mom's birthday is this weekend, so happy birthday, Mom. That's it, stay safe, everybody. It's going to be, oh, it's going to be really hot this week, so just a reminder, our Hazel Park, our ice arena and rec center are open from 11 until 9 for cooling on Wednesday, and our Hazel Park library is open its regular hours, also available for cooling. And I was at Tony's Ace Hardware today, and they have a surplus of fans and air conditioners, so stop by your locally, local, friendly neighborhood store and purchase a cooling agent.
Andy Lucero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Last Memorial Day weekend, it was, I won't mention all the other things, but it was great to see many of you out there, and to be back having the festivities again. The great weather's coming up, so look out for the bicyclists, and remind everybody there is the Hazel Park Bike, Hazel Park Casual Bike Club, they meet Wednesday behind the high school at 7 o'clock. Melissa, it was a very nice event, I thank you for bringing it here to Hazel Park, it's sad that you had to do that, but it was, it's a nice event, and I know many people are, have family touched by pancreatic cancer, there's a lot out there.
A lot of people.
Yeah, that's, so, thank you for bringing that event to us. As Alyssa mentioned, the weather, if they aren't getting out to, you know, the warming centers, keep an eye on your neighbors, especially the elderly, just check in on them, make sure you're around, and your pets, don't leave them out without water, or in the cars, and things like that. And on that note, thank you for everybody coming out. If you love somebody, tell them, and if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Procham, make a call.
Thank you, Mayor. You guys have basically covered everything that I had written down to say.
They usually do by ten.
But the one thing that nobody did mention was, I would like to thank Congressman Levin.
You tuck my thought.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
There's really nothing.
I had a written down.
We had a check presentation on Friday, which the money, what is it, $555,000?
505.
505.
Federal grant.
And so it's a grant that will help remodel the building, the pole barn that was meant to be more than just a pole barn 30 years ago, or whatever it was. So I would like to thank Andy for bringing that money to our community. He also, the other grant for the, because that's through his office as well.
The pop-up business grant, and what we're going to be doing with that is we're going to be constructing a structure there to do pop-up businesses on South John R., at West George, and Eight Mile on a piece of property that the city of Hazel Park has owned, we're going to create a structure for pop-up businesses, an awning, and also a spot for a food truck. So we were going to create some cool things down there.
Entrepreneurship.
What's that?
We're going to have some entrepreneurship opportunities.
We're going to have some entrepreneurship opportunities there.
Which is amazing, because I was, well, yeah, that is hard for you to say, because our city is full of entrepreneurs.
Didn't know what the hell he said, but it's okay.
Yeah, like, we have a lot of entrepreneurs in our city, so I, this is, this is an amazing thing, I think, especially for South John R., you know, helping push more businesses down that way that benefit the residents that live, because I also live in the south part of Hazel Park, so it's kind of nice.
And a big thank you to Congressman Levin for that.
Yes. I would like to wish everybody Happy Father's Day this weekend, it's Father's Day, don't forget about your dad on Sunday. So, and I was going to mention, but I think this were, this is worth repeating, it's supposed to be really hot tomorrow, please keep an eye on your neighbors, please keep an eye on your neighbors, just check in, it only takes a few minutes to check in with your neighbors, so, thank you.
Thank you. Well, everything's been spoken for.
Have a good night.
But I do want to say thank you to our school board members, Dawn Rice and Melissa Baldwin, for coming out, and all the candidates that came up to talk. It's exciting to have everyone come out to run for office, you know, years past, we haven't had that many candidates run for offices, and it's exciting to see the participation coming from all corners of our community. And thank you for coming here and giving, and if you want to come by next month, I know the election's in, what, August, or July? July. November. Why, you want to have primaries no more? But come by in the next few months, kind of give a, you know, synopsis of what, who you are and what you stand for again, so the public can actually know, notice and take notice in what's going on, because this hits baseball all the time, okay? And we did have a great event at the memorial festival, and everything went well, except for a few stupid idiots, but, you know, we always have to learn how to deal with that in life today, society's so different to what it was years ago, but we always had idiots around, so we had to learn how to live with them. But hopefully, the people that know how to conduct themselves can show the right path, and hopefully, the immature people can follow a good path from good leadership. And I want to say that because of good leadership from our police chief, our fire chief, and other department heads that gave us great leadership and apprehensions, and keeping our city safe and moving forward in a positive light, it's been a challenge, but our challenge, we always do it, we step up. Hazel Park is always committed to stepping up for the future and the betterment of our community and all of our residents, and that's who we are. No matter whether we're elected or not, it's who we are. We will do the job necessary, and find the people in public offices, or, you know, a police chief or a fire chief, that will do the job the right way. And we have been fortunate enough to have great leadership in our police, police department, fire department, DPW, water department for all these years, and I don't want to lose these guys, and they're ready to retire, but we don't want to lose them. But, you know, we've had our challenges in Hazel Park over the years, and, you know, we're all working through things, and, you know, I'm working through a bad tooth situation here, but, you know, they took all my teeth. But, yeah, I did that to make a, you know, I lost a few crowns, lost a couple caps over the years, and it just comes down to financial responsibility for, bite the bullet, basically, is what I did. Had a mall pull June 1st, I've been, you know, dealing with this for the last couple weeks, I get a new set of teeth in a couple weeks to refit, and then, of course, my permit's in about two months. But it's a hell of a diet program. 27 pounds in 14 days.
You look great.
And I'm hoping to lose another 20, you know, so I can be down to where I was maybe about the time, you know, my second child came around. I gained too much weight, it's bad for my health. But anyways, it's been, it's been an adventure to deal with this, but it's a bigger adventure living with all my neighbors and constituents and friends, to be there for them if they have a time of need, you know, I'd like to listen to everybody, it's why I have my business in town, because I felt the commitment to put my business in town, you know, like a lot of other people, and because I want to be the participant of my community. And I think it shows that our community has a lot of entrepreneurs, and businesses, small or big, that started here over the years, and still aren't with us anymore, think about it. Harmony House, big boys, started here. I mean, these are businesses back in the 50s that started here, and you move forward, you see the new changes, and we have all these young, talented people coming in with all these new ideas, our kids, our children, our grandkids. It's exciting to see, as a parent, to see the progress of future moving, and having the opportunities for trades. See, when I grew up and went to school, having trades, you had to go to school, you had to pay for- school, you had to pay for it. You know, it cost me $20,000 to go to school for trades. It was a lot of money back in the 80s. I had to struggle through it and pay my own way. Then, you know, there's a lot of people that went to college, never finished college, you know, because it was too expensive to finish college. And the few that did, of course, you know, they were the golden childs. They had the golden parachute, you know, mom and dad paying them. But, you know, there's a lot of people that struggled to get their way through college and earned their degrees too, and I respect them for doing that. But owning that degree makes you a better person. When you want to own that degree and pay for it, and even if you do have the opportunity to get it for free, and you respect that degree and make money with it, that's what it matters. And I hope the unions here can help our kids because there's a lack of, there's a lack of people, kids out there, people that you, we need to do the trades. We have such a lack of it, you can't get a builder to build a house because they're all tied up for years on out, or a plumber even, so, unless you want to wait a week. So, but anyways, thank you very much. Motion to go to the executive...
Executive session.
Moved, adjourned to executive session for discussions of pending litigation.
Personnel and contract negotiations.
Stag it or support, whatever.
All right, folks. Have a good night.